All right. Good evening. It is 7:02 PM on August 31st, and I would like to call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Good evening, Councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Garza here?
He's not here this evening. He'll be excused.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spataford.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember what?
Here.
There are seven members present in quorum. Councilmember Garza is absent.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First item on the agenda is our meditation and pledge of allegiance. So is there anyone on council, the clerk, or the mayor who wish us to keep someone in our thoughts as we have a moment of observation? Seeing none, I will just ask folks.
Hold on, I was raising my finger, but you were looking at it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm thinking I'm still there. This may have no meaning to some, but I'm just going to say Wakanda forever. And that'll cover it.
There you go. Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. All right, if you all please join me in a moment of observant and silent meditation. Thank you. Now for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have for your approval the printed council proceedings of August 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the printed council proceedings.
There's a proper motion before us. Is there any discussion on the proceedings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spataford.
Um, yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember what?
Yeah.
Seven years, zero days, the proceedings are approved, which takes us to the order of comments by council members and the city clerk.
Sure, I will open it up real quick, just let all of you know that are here for a, the item related to the the Montgomery Drain Assessment Roll that did not come out of the committee the whole this evening, so that will not be considered this evening. I don't know where that falls in our agenda exactly in terms of legislative items, but it will not be, it will not be considered this evening. So that's my council, my council member comments. Are there comments from other council members or the mayor, or well, council members at this moment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, do you have anything to add to the discussion?
Not tonight, thank you.
All right, and just as a reminder to everybody, the clerk will be with us on September 14th at Cal to present his election presentation before the ballots go out. All right, seeing none, let's move on, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the virtual audience who has a community event they would like to announce, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details. You need to raise your hand at this time, virtually. And you do that by star line on a telephone, option Y on a Mac, Alt-Y on Windows, or on the participant screen, there should be a place to click raising your hand. And I see no hands, so we will move on. And I will announce that to speak for public comments on one of the public hearings or the items on the consent agenda, resolutions for action. You will be given up to three minutes to speak. You do need to virtually raise your hand as I just indicated by using one of those methods on the Zoom. And we will be closing sign up at the end of the first speaker, so please go ahead and begin raising your hands. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Clerk, before we move on, I just, Loretta Sanaway often has a community event announcement, her hand went up while you were saying how to raise the hand, so I just want to clarify that she, she's raising her hand for public comment and not the event amounts, as long as I was going to call on her for a second. Loretta, were you raising your hand for a vendor community or input? I'm sorry.
Public comment.
All right, thank you. We'll get back to you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore, sorry.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank everybody who showed up to the senior fair last week. We did our first drive-through senior fair and really didn't know what to expect, and we had, it started at 11:00. We had our first people there at 9:30. We started the moving cars through at about 10:30, and we served 500 people in about an hour and a half. We probably could have served 800 people. So I'm sorry for anybody who showed up near the end and the food and the resource bags were gone, but it was a very good success. It was great to see people. They didn't mind waiting in their cars in line with masks on, thanks to all of our park staff. We did a really great job. Want to remind everybody, we've got some walking Wednesdays coming up where we're doing some filmings. We've had a really good time with these. We'll be at the Willow Walnut Comstock Park neighborhood. We'll be at Bethlehem Lutheran, and we'll be at First Presbyterian. So these are all great ways to show off our community. We're, we're videoing these, and then we're going to come up with some videos and one big video at the end, so that way we can still show off our city while not congregating with too many people and getting too near each other. And finally, this is one of my last chances to remind everybody to please go and fill out your census if you haven't already done so. The, unfortunately, the federal government has shortened the census period, and it will be ending at the end of September. I personally believe it should be longer and shouldn't go at least through October as originally planned, but while we're on a shortened timeframe, if you haven't filled out your census, please do that. It's quick, it's easy, and it's a lot of money for the city. And, and if you know anybody who hasn't filled it out, please tell them it's got to be filled out. It's necessary. This is tremendously important for Lansing, for all the services that we provide. So don't forget to fill out your census. I'll remind you one more time in a few weeks, but we've got until the end of September. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to the order of public comment on legislative matters, and that does include the resolutions listed on the consent agenda and resolution as well as the following public hearings that I will read into the record. Number one, an ordinance to eliminate the prohibition on street parking from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Number two, an ordinance to eliminate the annual and temporary permits for overnight street parking. Number three, an ordinance to regulate on-street parking during snow emergencies. And then number four is consideration of the disposition of city property, transferring properties administered by the Lansing Housing Commission to the Lansing Housing Commission.
Hey. I'm sorry, it's all you.
Do we want Councilmember Dunbar Hussein to give overviews of those?
Yeah, let's start with the Councilmember Dunbar. We're going to do this again. If you could give an overview, please, on the resolutions that came out of the Public Service Committee and what they do, just real quick, please.
Okay, the basic gist of it is we are proposing to repeal the overnight parking ban from 2:00 to 5:00, eliminate the permit system that charges $125 to have a permit to be on the street, and establishes an emergency scenario where if there is a need for snow and ice removal, that we can enact an off-street, I don't know what you call it, announcement and make everybody get off the street. So, anyway, that's.
Thus making it illegal to park on the street during this.
Thus making it illegal to park on the street. I don't know if that was too cursory, and if Councilmember Betts wants to add anything to that. Okay, we've repeated it so many times. Okay.
All right, and then we will go to Councilmember Hussein, our Vice President, to discuss the fourth public hearing this evening, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so we've been, you know, working this issue for quite some time. Back in May, I believe it was, we were charged with the potential of amending, I should say, Chapter 216, which would permit the Lansing Housing Commission to own property for its purposes in its own name. We had a lot of discussion regarding access to capital at that time, disposition of properties, things of that nature. And, and really, you know, what was a pretty public process. We didn't receive much in the way of public opposition. And ultimately, back in May, we did move to amend Chapter 260 to again allow for the Lansing Housing Commission to own property for its purposes in its own name. What we are now looking at is essentially executing the next step of that process and the actual transferring of our interest in these properties to the Lansing Housing Commission, and this would be by quitclaim deed. I believe there's 227 properties that would be part of this property transfer, and the LSC would pay to the city, I believe it's $1 per property. And so that's the, I should say, that's the subject of tonight's public hearing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. All right, there we are. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, the actual public comment portion. So our first speaker is Loretta Sanaway, followed by Dan Decker. Go ahead, Loretta.
Hello. On the parking, I think that the city council did an admirable job over a number of months, listening to multiple people put input into a reasonable and fair solution to the parking issue. So my first thought is leave it alone. Don't change it. Second thought is if you must change it, then let's look at some other options that haven't been considered as far as I'm aware in the past. One of those is if a landlord owns a house that he rents out to, say, three or four different people, and there are three or four different cars, and there's parking for two cars, for example, he be required to purchase as part of his rental inspection approval two permits, or however many more permits he needs than there are spaces to park within his property. And that, of course, you know, you're going to say, well, then that just goes and raise the rent, and that's going to be hard on the people that it's hard on already, but you know, we've got to do something. There has to be a way of bringing in some income, for one thing. There has to be a way of remedying the crowded streets, for another thing. And somewhere along the way, somebody's going to have to bite this bullet. The other option is to consider what happens in larger cities frequently. New York is an example. New York City, certainly not on that scale, but perhaps the landlord or a homeowner needs to purchase parking space in front of their properties and make that part of the deed of the property, is to own a space in front of that house that needs more parking than their driveway permits. So these are my thoughts at this time. I hope you'll take them into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to remind folks that now the first speaker has finished, so if you have not already raised your hand, we have closed sign-in, so just the people who have already raised their hands will be called on. Next, we have Dan Decker, followed by Arcoe Baugh.
Okay, I would just like to ask the chairman if he could clarify the status of the Montgomery Drain Assessment Roll as to when you think that will be available.
Yeah, sorry, my screen flattered. So we don't normally respond to public comment, but I just, I didn't give enough detail, I suppose. That will be, it's been made available to council as of like 5:30 this evening or something along those lines, but we'll discuss it at the 7th, I'm sorry, the September 14th committee of the whole meeting, as we were planning to this evening.
Thank you.
Was that the end of your comments?
That's finished, right.
Okay. Next, we have Arcoe Baugh, followed by Dr. Brent Crane.
Yes, good evening, members of the council, Mayor Shore and Clerk Swope. I have been a resident of the greater Lansing area for almost 40 years. I've lived in Lansing itself for 30 years. I've had my house in the West Side Neighborhood for the last 22 years. And I'm really disappointed with what you're seemingly ready to do, which is to abolish the overnight street parking ban. I've spoken on this issue numerous times, and I don't understand for the life of me why you're undoing what you just spent all this time doing earlier this year, which I thought for the first time in my time that it was an apt compromise between enforcing the ban as it was and eliminating the ban. I don't get it at all. You know, I've lived in this neighborhood, as I said, for a while, and for the first time, I'm actually, we are actively exploring leaving not only the West Side Neighborhood, but probably the city of Lansing. The condition of the neighborhoods and issues such as the traffic and the fast cars moving down the streets, the overnight parking, yard and home maintenance, code compliance, noise levels, the impact of rentals in the neighborhood have really, this neighborhood is not what it was when I moved in here that long ago, when I said specifically I wanted to live between Saginaw and St. Joe and Berlin and MLK. And I'm talking about the neighborhood, but I just need to stress to you that I don't understand the need to have our streets look like any other big street in Chicago or other places where there are cars lined up all the time, and it's just, it's unattractive. I think it's a safety hazard. And again, I don't understand why you're spending all this energy to undo something you spent all this energy to do and got a lot of feedback on, a lot of public input on, and now you're going to undo it. There seems to be an issue in this town with compliance. We seem to not want to invest into having people comply with the things we set up. And instead of investing in compliance, we decide to just undo them because it's easier, because there's loud voices in some room. I'm a loud voice, so I get that. But I, but I don't understand this idea that you're just now going to spin it out and undo it. So I'm disappointed. It may seem like that's one issue for me, but it's not. It's all the issues I just mentioned, and we're actively now, I, we invested $25,000 earlier this year in our kitchen, did a total remakeover. We were just now on the verge of probably investing another $50,000 to do new windows and new siding. That's all on hold, because if we're going to move, we're not going to invest that in this house in the West Side Neighborhood. We would rather take that money and put it into a property we buy somewhere else. So I just want to share that with you, explain my disappointment. I think you're solving a problem that has already been solved to the best of our ability, and, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Brent Crane, followed by Kyle.
Evening. I would like to speak to the trash violation at 1110 Hickory. In my view, this fine is but part of a pattern of undue and disproportionate burden placed on the elderly, the suffering, and those least able to afford the fines or defend themselves against injustice. The policies in place fail to safeguard the livelihood of those under your protection as council members of this city. I was not afforded a fair appeal. Code compliance produced photos, statements, invoices, which I was not shown while they had access to everything I had submitted. In the court of law, both sides get to see the evidence. This unfair advantage made it impossible to adequately prepare a defense. In addition, the General Services Committee is made up entirely of city council members. I was quite frankly shocked to see the marked absence of any independent third party. This was a claim against the city, presided over entirely by those who make policy for the city. Does no one see the inherent conflict of interest? After my appeal, I located a copy of the full agenda. The trash authorization form on page 27 shows approval for three hours of work to remove the 10 yards of debris from my property, yet the invoice shows 14 hours and 55 yards. Who approved this to go from three hours to 14? I see no documentation, nor was there anything close to 55 yards of debris. Furthermore, my contractor had already commenced cleanup the day prior. The following statement is from my contractor, quote, "I was there starting to remove the debris from the house repairs at 3:00 PM on Monday. I left to remove the rest the next morning, and almost everything was gone. It was going to take me five pickup loads of approximately $50 each. There was no way there was near that much trash that they stated removed. A very absorbent amount was charged to you, which I feel is very unfair," end quote. Brian McGrane described the bidding process. There was one contractor who applied, and hence no competitive bidding. There is also apparently no accountability beyond a gentleman's agreement. It is exactly this kind of irresponsible management that opens the door to fraud, which I suggest is happening on your watch. Scott Sanford indicated the city is writing 300 to 600 grass violations per week. Does no one think to ask why this systemic problem exists? How many of these fines are laid upon the elderly? How many on those unable to afford a mower, much less pay someone to mow? How many on those suffering from loss, such as Mr. Bloomer, whose life fell apart when his fiance died, yet he was billed $435 to mow a yard anyone would have mowed for 60 bucks? Where is the support to those in need? Where was the city when I suffered the $15,000 tenant-induced loss to my property while fighting my way through graduate school and trying to provide for my kids? The city was there only to slap on the red tag and bury me under fees, and lacked even the decency to return my emails and phone calls. And just how much income does the city generate from this? I don't know. What is it, 50 to 100,000 a week in fees? I don't know. There is no incentive for the city to come up with a. Is that the end of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, you're on mute.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kyle, followed by Rachel Diskin. Go ahead, Kyle.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you all for being here. The, I'm here to discuss the parking situation. I was unfamiliar with it, and so I did a little Googling. I found a Lansing State Journal article here from December 2019. Lansing requires residents to buy permits for overnight street parking. I gave it a read. I, a read. I do want to give a quick appreciation to Councilman Jackson for this quote here. My issue is with the unfettered discretion of the parking manager. I agree with you. I think that it feels like a self-insulated system, and I do appreciate your move to try to lower the fees. I agree with Loretta that apartments and landlords should provide permits. I think that if they don't, this is a tax to live in the city. The, and I agree with Loretta also that winter emergencies, you know, we can make exceptions. We live in Michigan. The, things are going to happen with that. But my main concern, I guess, is towards the end of this article, I've got a quote here from Mary Annie Shore. Many people want the ability to park overnight throughout Lansing Fair, understandable, while others have concerns about possible congestion on our street. I guess, who are these others? And by congestion on our streets, do you mean it looks like people actually live here? The, um, you know, this ordinance passed today is a compromise. It may have been a compromise, but at the end of the day, it's still a tax on the people of Lansing. And I wholeheartedly disagree with this idea and would advocate for either repeal or a partial repeal that would have landlords and apartment complexes foot the bill, and I'll see the rest of my time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel Diskin, followed by someone whose phone number ends with 4371. Go ahead, Rachel.
Hello, thank you all for being here today and for letting me speak. I'm also here to talk about the parking ordinance. I see the ordinance as something that's not equitable and puts a disproportionate burden on renters and those with lower incomes in the city of Lansing, and moreover, it just doesn't accomplish the goal. You know, the goal, I think, for everyone is to allow for safe transportation of public vehicles, like ambulance and snowplows. And the parking ordinance really doesn't address that. I think, like hypothetically, in the ideal world, what we'd want to see with this ordinance, right, is that everyone who needs a parking permit purchases a parking permit, pays the city, while law, everyone's parking legally on the street, but in real, real life, it, that would just, the street would be just as crowded as it was before. Like, we're not actually addressing the issue by creating this permit situation, so. You know, I think the better way to address this is to look at it as other communities have with, like, single-side street parking, where you just never are able to park on the left side of the street. You park on the right side of the street, and anyone parked in the left gets towed, ticketed, whatnot. I've looked places that do that. It's very simple, and I've never encountered a city that had this no parking from 2:00 to 5:00 or whatnot, until I came to Lansing and got a ticket, and I didn't realize it existed. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that that's very equitable either, and I think that there's definitely ways for us to do this that doesn't involve this parking permit system and allows for people to be able to park on a single side, and, you know, I think it's completely understandable to have emergency situations where nobody can park on the street. But, and then last but not least, if we're going to keep doing this parking permit system, we've got to fix it so that people can actually purchase one online. It is absurd. I live on the east side, and I went to go purchase one because I wanted to do the right thing, and I was like, I have to put a copy of my, like, mortgage of my house and a copy of my driver's license. Like, it was, it was a huge hassle, and I wasn't willing to do it. So if I wasn't, then other people won't be either. So I guess those are my, those are my points, and I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next is phone number ending in 4371. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. You could identify yourself, that'd be great, and then followed by Propagand. Phone number 4371, are you?
Mr. Clerk, why don't we move on and then come back if this person.
Okay, next is Propagandy, who I think is Michael Lynn, followed by Margaret Olson. Michael?
I am here. Thank you for recognizing our hashtag of Propagandy and recognizing it being me. This issue of the parking seems very simple to me and to anybody that lives in a lower-income house or in a lower-income area. And what it sounds like, like Arcoe, who just spoke first from the West Side Neighborhood, unfortunately, what he's expressing, his disdain with this and other things in his neighborhood, is not this parking issue. It's more or less that gentrification didn't work in the West Side Neighborhood, and people are buying houses there, and they are renting them out to people who you may not want to live next to. That sounds like the issue there. He expressed non-compliance as being the issue, why people bring these type of things. And for somebody who's putting $25,000 into a new kitchen renovation and $50,000 more dollars into his house to renovate, he can see it as non-compliance because he can afford to pay a ticket every day if need be, when his family comes through for Thanksgiving dinner, whatever the case is, and they don't have the time to get, you know, permits for those parking or whatever. But I think it's important for somebody like himself to understand that non-compliance isn't always a decision. Sometimes it's the only option. And I think that's the biggest problem that we have in Lansing, is people don't pay attention to have empathy for anybody outside of their own situation. Other things that have been stated is putting this on landlords and whatnot. That'll no doubtily end up on a tenant's hands if it's put on a landlord. They're just going to end up putting it on your rent. They're going to add it to something the same way they do with trash or a dog fee, or whatever those cases are. So let's not even think about that as being an option if we're really talking about helping the people that can't afford to pay these tickets. Also, we, I think we all know, if anybody follows the West Side Neighborhood, who called and had a whole street ticketed, it sounds like it was Arcoe over the last week, and that shouldn't be an option that people can do to punish people who have no option or choice than to park on the street. Crowding the streets was never the issue, and the reason why it's 2:00 to 5:00 in the morning, being that I'm a Lansing resident, and I've been here driving for over 20 years, it was always because of snow removal, and that's what time they do it, and that's what time they sweep the streets. So why is it not that there's just a special time to do that? And why is it not that during snow removal days, or when there's a heavy snow, then we all understand the ordinance means that you can't park in the street during that day? Just like you can't have a fire burning on a very windy day. There's days that you can't burn, and so on and so forth. So this doesn't seem to be the end-all situation that we got to really think that hard on, y'all. Just make this happen, man. And Andy, go ahead and get up out of here, my guy.
Thank you. Next, we have Margaret Alston, and then John. Go ahead, Margaret.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, um, I just want to express my opposition to eliminating the prohibition on, of street parking. Ironically, I, I've been living in my neighborhood for about 37 years, which is the Tammany Hills subdivision. And ironically, I just called my councilperson, like, well, didn't call, but I wrote an email voiced a lot of concerns, and one of them being how all these vehicles are just parked on, you know, on the streets overnight, and I was wondering if there was still an ordinance. And then he let me know, well, interesting you would bring that up, because they're having a hearing, and I guess there's some people. because they're having a hearing, and I guess there's some people that want that law gone, that ordinance to be eliminated. Well, for me, I, I think, um, I don't want to feel like I live in Chicago. And, um, I would like to maybe echo some of the concerns that Loretta said earlier when she was making her presentation. Um, I think it's an ordinance that needs to be enforced. I don't know if it's a matter of you guys short on staff, which is, I don't know the history of why people want to eliminate it, but, um, city, they need to have a person to go around and ticket people. Or if, if it's a matter of them getting a permit, then they should get a permit. Um, it's just like me having to pay to drive. So, I don't know why we don't want to keep our streets clean here. I don't like the clutter. Too many cars on the street. I think that, and then to expect somebody, when the snow comes, that they're going to do the right thing. I don't think it works like that. Why would they do the right thing? They haven't been doing it now. Even with a law. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I'm going to remind you to take yourself off mute, please.
Thank you. Uh, John, uh, go ahead, and then followed by, John is followed by Galaxy S10E.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, regarding the parking. Um, I have, uh, have roommates that I rent extra rooms out to. The, the fee would go to them. I will be frank. I have a lot of bills to pay. I take great pride in keeping up my place and, uh, making sure that they've got a safe, comfortable, clean place to live in that is well-maintained and up to city code. And it's, there's a lot of expenses there. Utilities aren't cheap, et cetera. We gotta pay for permitted parking. I'm, I'm afraid that it'll be my roommates that are going to have to pay for that. Um, I, I definitely, it, it is frustrating when you drive down a street and there are cars everywhere. I would second the other citizens', uh, idea of possibly only parking on one side of the street, either, you know, only the north side or west or east sides of streets, for example. Um, and having proper signage and curb painting to, uh, enforce that, you know? If there are problems where people are parking in front of driveways, et cetera, just enforce what, what's already on the books. We have, uh, we have laws and regulations that cover those sorts of things. So if, if code enforcement is the issue, just give people out there to, to write the tickets that are going to be tickets regardless of time of day. So definitely support this, but maybe the council needs to relook the exact wording and what the outcomes, uh, of repealing this would be. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our final speaker that signed in before we close sign up is Galaxy S10E. Go ahead, Galaxy.
Hello, my name's Brittany. Um, I just want to say that the parking ordinance is doing what it's supposed to. I am a younger resident, and when I first lived on the east side, I got my first no parking two to five. Um, ever since then, I found some other way to park. It, the people don't move their cars during the winter. And I work in the city, and I've seen the, the snowplows struggle to get through the city streets. And then I've seen the same residents that are parked on the streets complain that they can't, they're, they're not plowing the streets. They're not doing what they're supposed to do. Let's blame the city. Why are we paying taxes? It, we're, we're paying taxes so we can plow the streets. We have this ordinance so we can have the cars off the street. And currently, we just, we have too many cars on the street. Right now, they're able to identify these cars that have been sitting on the streets for months with no tag, covered VIN numbers, dust all over them, and they're able to get those cars off the streets for once. Before, they weren't able to do that. Um, plus, when you take away this ordinance, you're taking away jobs. We've hired four people to do this job, and when you take away this ordinance, they're not going to have jobs anymore. Um, that's, that's my spiel. Have a good one.
Okay, thank you. And we are to the referral of the public hearings.
Mr. Clerk, before we do that, the phone number that wished to try and make some public comment, can we just double-check that that person was not the wish to comment? Wasn't it, uh?
I don't see that phone number on here.
Okay, very good, then we'll move on. I apologize.
I did not see the same phone number.
Just wanted to make sure we were
Yep.
leaving it open. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we have number one, the ordinance to eliminate the prohibition on, on street parking.
That'll go to the community of Public Service.
We have the ordinance to eliminate the permits for overnight parking.
Public Service.
The ordinance to regulate, uh, parking during snow emergencies.
Public Service.
And the, um, transfer property to the Lansing Housing Commission.
Community Hall.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President, uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. This is, this, I was trying to get to my, um, unmute button just to comment at the end of the speakers, and I, there was two things I wanted to say. Um, one, someone mentioned, um, that the city would lose a lot of money if we stop this ordinance. And I just, I want to say, I personally don't believe in, that we create any ordinance for the purpose of making money. I certainly wouldn't support that. So, um, it's, it's for other reasons. But the second one was, the, there was a speaker who mentioned cars on the road that, um, were not drivable, didn't have tags. We have an, we have other laws that, um, allow folks to take, to, to get those cars off the road. Our cars, they have to be licensed and drivable. So if anybody sees that, that's a completely different issue. It's not a two to five AM parking issue. So I just wanted to make sure that folks know that there is an avenue to take care of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so I would, um, first, let me list the items on the consent agenda, and then I'll move the consent agenda. Consent agenda tonight includes, uh, 1A, setting of a public hearing in consideration of a noise special permit. Hoffman Brothers, Inc., request to allow for work on Saturdays from seven AM to five PM, and Sundays from twelve PM to five PM for the period of, uh, September nineteenth to October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, for the Willard Avenue Pump Station and Sanitary, uh, Sanitary Force Main Rehabilitation Project. Sorry, this is work that is necessary to support the new, um, McLaren Hospital. Uh, and that public hearing would be September fourteenth. B, 1B, claim disposition, appeal number seventeen eighty-one. This is for Brent, claim for four thousand dollars, I'm sorry, four thousand and fifty dollars of trash removal fees at one thousand, uh, one hundred and ten Hickory Street. Uh, 1C, which is the claim disposition, uh, number one, one, three, seven. This is for Mr. John E. Blummer for four hundred and thirty-five dollars in grass and weed, uh, grass and weed fees at seven twenty-five North Pine Street. Um, also including the consent agenda is item two A. This is a joint reappointment for Monica Janner to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board. This would be for a term to expire September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, and then also items three A and B. Three A, uh, is the acceptance of the payment asset management plan. And three B is the traffic control order number twenty dash zero seven. This is for the installation of stop signs at High Street and Caesar E. Chavez Avenue intersection. Uh, so again, that is, uh, that consists, um, sorry, those are the items that are on the consent agenda, and I would move the
Before you move, Mr. Vice President, I just would like to remind folks, if you want something, we'll speak now for what we're, hold your peace. Otherwise, a no vote means we have to redo the consent agenda. So just to avoid that situation. Uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I would just remove, uh, letter B, claim disposition from the consent agenda, especially since Mr. Kane is here and spoke.
Thank you, that is noted. Mr. Vice President, would you please move the altered consent agenda?
Sure, so I would move the consent agenda with the removal of item 1B.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On adoption of the consent agenda with the one deletion, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Uh, that is seven yeas, zero nays. So the consent agenda is adopted, is picked. So that takes us to the item that was pulled, the claim disposition for appeal number seventeen eighty.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so, uh, the General Services Committee, we had the claimant into our General Services meeting on eighth, August twenty-fifth. Uh, we also had our lead housing inspector, Scott Stanford, into our meeting on August twenty-fifth, uh, to discuss this appeal. Uh, we did hear from Mr. Scott Stanford. He explained to the committee, uh, that this particular property, um, is a long-term, uh, red-tagged property. Uh, it was cited for, uh, trash violation on twelve eleven, two thousand and nineteen, uh, with compliance date of twelve eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Um, in accordance with our, uh, policies, the premise officer, uh, Mr. Breeder, we, did recheck this property, um, the next day, sort of in December nineteenth, uh, and found that all violations were still present. Uh, therefore, the violations were submitted to our contractor, who is, in this case, Eric's Refuge. Uh, the contractor arrived on January seventh after the holidays, uh, and the violations were still present, as indicated in the photos, uh, that is, that are in your packet, uh, and a cleanup was, uh, performed. As part of that cleanup, uh, there was a large pile of brush and tree limbs. Uh, there was clothing, paint, construction materials, old windows, uh, and the like. Again, the, the pictures speak for themselves. He also shared with us that this particular worksite, uh, and again, you can see it in the pictures, was not being, uh, maintained, uh, in an orderly fashion. Uh, as an example, no dumpster or trailer, um, had been placed at the property for the degree to be placed in. Um, with regards to this particular property, there's also a bit of a history, uh, with violations. Um, in, in the last few years, there have been four grass violations. There's been a board up, uh, there's been a trash violation. Uh, and the property, again, uh, as I had previously, previously mentioned, has been red-tagged since April of two thousand and fifteen. Uh, so for those reasons, the code office, uh, was recommending denial of the claim. Uh, in committee, we broke down the bill just a little bit, uh, Mr. Jackson. Uh, we found that three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars of the four thousand and fifty, uh, that was being contested is in contractor fees. Uh, and two hundred and sixty-five dollars of that is administration fees, um, and is actually payable to the city of Lansing. Um, in terms of the contractor fees, uh, when we break down that invoice, you see fourteen hours of work, uh, and you see about fifty-five cubic yards of waste that, that were removed. The claim is correct, uh, in that the original authorization, um, authorized three hours of work and ten cubic yards of waste. However, in the correction notice, um, it did state clearly, um, that if the contractor arrives and if there are additional materials, um, on that, uh, on the property, that those two will be removed. Um, I asked the lead housing inspector, as part of, uh, the pilot process in the General Services Committee, um, whether, whether or not pre-authorization was sought. Uh, and he, um, uh, confirmed that pre-authorization was, in fact, sought by Mr. Breeder, who was the premise inspector in this case. Um, also, if you look at the pictures that are part of the packet, uh, also those pictures were uploaded, um, the week before, uh, onto the city's website, uh, in the Agenda Center, um, the, the week before, um, our hearing. If you look, there are six pictures, um, that do show the truck as empty, um, and then full. Uh, if you note the date, time stance on them, it shows that, uh, Eric's Refuge was on site all day. Um, you also, um, should know that Eric's, it, it was explained to us that Eric's trucks, they don't have the standard eight by eight or eight by ten, uh, flatbed. They actually have an eight by sixteen, um, that hold approximately eighteen to twenty cubic yards of waste. And so, uh, even at the minimum of eighteen cubic yards, if you look at the pictures, um, that would amount to about fifty-four cubic yards of, of waste that was, in fact, removed that day. Um, again, uh, the amount billed, uh, Mr. Jackson, is what the city was billed, uh, based on reauthorization, uh, in the provisions of the contract that we have in place with Eric's Refuge. Um, it, you know, we also found, um, that the worksite was not being maintained in an orderly fashion, um, and, and that that dumpster or trailer should have been placed at the property for the degree to be, uh, placed. And so, in terms of the committee's decision, um, we did deny this claim in full due to the, uh, reauthorization, the work that was, uh, actually done, the amount the city was billed for, uh, and the notice, notification process being followed, uh, with fidelity. So with that being said, I would move, uh, the resolution to deny, uh, this claim in the amount of four thousand and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. That is a proper motion. Is there anyone wishing to make comment on this resolution? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
On adopting the claim denial, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Oh.
That was a no?
Correct, that was a no. From me is a yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, the resolution is adopted. And that takes us to resolutions by the Committee on Public Surfaces. And we have the snow and ice assessment.
Councilmember Dunbar, from your committee, please.
Okay, that, I'm never going to get this right. Um, all right, so, um, this is the roll for snow and ice assessment, um, adoption. Are we?
Councilmember, you muted yourself.
Okay, I did not realize I did that.
We heard it was the roll for snow and ice, and that was it.
Okay, um, so yeah, I'm, um, we've, uh, hold on a sec. I'm feeling like I'm gonna faint.
Oh, Lord.
Would you like me to handle this one, Councilmember?
Do we need to call somebody?
Is, is, uh, is Dom there?
Um, yeah, he's outside. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get off camera.
Yep, please do. Just, just a minute, folks. Okay, um, I have alerted, uh, Councilmember Dunbar significantly, other that there may be an issue. No, I wasn't playing Candy Crush. Um, so the
Actually, we're
Mr. Vice President, if I could turn the gavel over to you, please, and then, uh, if I could address this issue. Yep, thank you. I, uh, so what we have in front of us is the snow and ice assessment for the city of Lansing. So this, uh, for the, this winter. Every year, as, as many of you know, we go through, um, an assessment process with snow and ice. So if residents get through, um, the, the, the notification period after a certain period of time, and they don't, they don't take care of their snow and ice, we, we notice them, and then we come back and take care of the snow and ice for them and charge them a fixed fee, uh, which is, I believe, base one hundred and forty-nine dollars. That's the, the, the minimum to send somebody out to take care of it after several periods of notification. Um, the, this year was a relatively light winter, so we only had three thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars worth of, um, snow and ice removal. Uh, and we had two folks appeal their snow and ice removal, and they were both denied by the committee. Uh, so this roll is now before us, um, for work that was performed by city contractors. And, um, we, I would move the roll, and we need to get it on the, the taxes. Unfortunately, um, I think I mentioned this before, or we've mentioned it before. Usually, we like to get this on the summer taxes, uh, so that folks are not confused by its presence. But it is, it's going to end up on the winter taxes because of COVID this year. It just, it, one of those things that didn't get, um, get, get processed quickly enough and with tax being delayed and whatnot. So it will be on the winter taxes, but it will be for last winter's snow and ice removal. So I move the resolution, or I move the roll.
Thank you, President Spatafor. There is a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerks, will we take the roll, please?
Okay, um, on the snow and ice roll, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar, are you back with us?
He is not, no.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to the, uh, Glenburn Commons, uh, assess.
President Spatafor, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. So this is now the special assessment for the Glen, Glenburn Commons trash and grass abatement. Um, we've all gone through the history of the treasurer running away with the spoon and the bag of money, and the president of the condo association there many, many years ago. Um, in fact, we're going to do a dramatic interpretation of it next year. But, um, what it is, it's a, it's a condominiumized, uh, public space in a, in Glenburn, uh, Glenburn subdivision, and, uh, it needs to be taken care of. So the residents petitioned the city a few years and it needs to be taken care of. So the residents petitioned the city a few years back, I believe, twenty sixteen, to set up the Special Assessment District. That Special Assessment District is for the purposes of taking care of the lawn. There was very little trash this year, so the average summer maintenance for that per property was fifty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. There were, I believe, as with the last one, two appeals. Both were denied. This is a, it's not a tax. It's not a unfair assessment. This is written right into their deed, and it's on their taxes. So with that, I will move the special assessment roll.
All right, there is a motion on the table. Is there any discussion?
A quick question. Brian's.
Sure, Brian, go ahead.
Brian's camera isn't on. Is that a problem with having quorum? Or are we okay? Oh, he's back.
He is back.
We get it.
Appreciate you rejoining us, Mr. Jackson. All right, seeing no discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yays, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to the Committee on Ways and Means for the grant acceptance for the recovery resource development.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. The grant acceptance that we have for you is the Economic Development Resource, Economic Recovery Resource Development Grant. And what this does is, in coordination with our Lansing EDC, we would be hiring a contract physician for a hundred thousand dollars. This is a one-time expense. What this person would be doing is, because of COVID, it was determined that we needed to have someone that would be willing to do the following purposes to commence and provide benefits to, no, I'm sorry, that's the city's responsibility, that would be networking with businesses to identify and better understand immediate and long-term needs, that they would identify funding sources and potential partners to coordinate for fundraising efforts, building and tapping into a network of businesses that they, this would include minority-owned businesses and other disproportionate impacted groups, creating linkage between various funding opportunities and qualified local applicants who can apply for those funds, fostering mutual benefit, beneficial, excuse me, relationships and current future partners at the locals, federal, and communicating with, building relationships with the private industry and potential funders. There is admin money that is part of the Lansing Economic, Lansing EDC that would allow us to utilize these one-time funds. Now, the goal is, is that hopefully it would accomplish what it's supposed to, bringing more money into EDC and the potential of having this contracted position go on longer than that. But this, as I said, is the money that they have available at this time. It's only for a one-time grant proposition with them, and they have already done an RFP that's been released. They will be, they were supposed to have gotten that to us. As of five thirty, I did not see the RFP there. We'll make sure that councilmembers do get a copy of that. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I believe we have Mr. McGrane here as well, who is the director that oversees the EDC. And I see Patricia's hand is up, so I'll turn it back over to the president.
I thought, I was wondering how far you were gonna take that.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Wood. So I have a couple of questions. The grant is a one-time grant. I mean, so after we hired this coordinator, we would be.
It's a contract position.
Yeah, we would be hoping for additional funds to support the contract, but that person would not be an employee of the City of Lansing. It would be a contract. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
This could be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McGrane, this could be an individual or a firm. So that, that has not been determined yet. It will be part of the selection process. The one question I didn't ask you, Mr. McGrane, and maybe you can give us the information now, is who will be making the selection and what criteria will they be using to make that selection?
Thank you, Councilman Wood, Councilmember Wood. And I realize as I'm nodding my head aggressively over here, I probably need to say things like yes for the record. So yes, this will be a contract position. And to an earlier question, you know, we're giving this one year. We need this to be results-oriented, and if it's not demonstrating results in a year, we're certainly not gonna look for its re-upping. We do have the RFP live. My apologies if you didn't receive that. I do believe I supplied that to Sheri the evening of your last committee meeting, but I can resubmit that to make sure you have it. That RFP is live right now. It does close, I believe, September fifteenth, at which point we will be reviewing those proposals. Could be an individual, could be a company, but certainly we've asked for that proposal to give us the majority of one person's time to be that contractor. We will have a panel reviewing. That panel will include myself. We believe somebody from LEAP will probably have somebody from the Community Foundation involved. It'll be folks like that. I imagine that it's gonna be a panel of three to five reviewers.
And just for the record, that RFP did come Friday, and Sheri just sent it to you, too.
Okay. And I was just gonna say, we might have gotten it, the number of emails and the different things that might have gotten lost in that, but thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Patricia, your hand is up, but I assume that's residual, so I'm gonna lower that. You've moved it. Is there any further discussion? Mr. McGrane, thank you for your time. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On accepting, on the grant resolution, councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yays, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, so we are to the hazardous pay acceptance.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. This is the first responders hazardous pay prevention program. This is through the Michigan Treasury Department that that application has gone in to. The amount that we would be receiving is three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. This would represent a one-time check for hazardous pay for first-time responders. The grant, again, as I said, would be one thousand dollars, and it would go to law enforcement officers, firefighters, EMTs, paramedic, and corrections officers. This would not be added into their retirement calculations, and the city would be responsible for paying FICA and Medicare. And I believe that is all the information, along with the fact that they've not released those funds yet. It is part of the process that the state is working on. So with that, I would move this grant acceptance.
Thank you. It has been moved. Is there further discussion? At this point out, it confused me a little bit, too, but we have to get it approved this fiscal year, the state's fiscal year, and our, because they, they expect to release it, but haven't yet, so. I see no other discussion, looking at the list here. So, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
She's aggressively nodding yes and thumbs up.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Okay, six yays, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to the Committee of the Whole for Public Improvement. No, that one's for Public Act four twenty-five, three agreements.
Sure, I'll have the vice president address all three of this at once. We will have to vote them separately. But, Mr. Vice President, if you could, I think the details remain the same regardless of the property.
Sure. So we received quite the history lesson as part of Committee of the Whole. That was courtesy of Mr. Samantha Harkins, as well as Mr. Jim Smirka. During Committee of the Whole, we learned that we have, among other four twenty-five agreements, we have in place three four twenty-five agreements with Delta Township, and they all expire at the end of this year. Mr. Smirka explained to us that Act four twenty-five is authorized by Public Act four twenty-five, I believe it is, of nineteen eighty-three. If I'm correct, enable essentially two local units of government to conditionally transfer property by written agreement for the purpose of really executing economic development projects. So these types of land transactions, I think is what he called it, a land transaction. He said that they run short of it and vexation, and they are at times needed to support proposed projects on property that, as an example, lack necessary infrastructure, you think of utilities, or in a situation, you know, where maybe economic incentives need to be taken advantage of when only one of the, I should say, the entities within this particular agreement actually have access to first-day statute. And as an example, that would be your industrial facilities tax exemptions. In any event, back in two thousand and five, the city and Delta Township did execute three of these agreements. And again, they expired at the end of the year. Our understanding is that we began negotiations on renewal at some point last year. We've ultimately settled on the terms of those renewals. Considering tax share percentages that were shared with us, the current agreements in place call for a splitting of property tax revenue, income tax revenue, and I believe it was administrative fees at a sixty-forty percentage or rate, with Delta receiving sixty percent. If approved by this council, the amended agreements would change the income tax split to a fifty-fifty share, and the City of Lansing would receive one hundred percent of the administrative fees. We did work to negotiate a fifty-fifty split for the property tax, but Delta arguing that they do provide police and they do provide fire, and they upkeep the infrastructure, things of that nature. They argued that it should remain at sixty-forty. Ultimately, we concurred. So as of now, it was explained to us as well that we receive about thirty-three thousand dollars annually from these three agreements. Over the past fifteen years, we've received some four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, but annually, that number is certain to go up if these are approved. The Delta Township Board of Trustees did, in fact, approve these agreements already, and if approved, the new agreements would expire fifteen years, I believe it's two thousand and thirty-five. So with that being said, I would move Public Act four twenty-five agreement renewal. This is for Delta Township and Android Industries. It was explained that this last piece is listed for reference, but in the actual resolution and agreement, you actually have a legal definition of the, of the land that's actually referenced. So with that being said, I'd move Public Act four twenty-five agreement renewal.
Very good. So we've got that item in front of us. Is there any further discussion from councilmembers? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yays, zero nays, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Vice President, the second one, if you would, please.
Sure. I would move Public Act forty, four twenty-five agreement renewal, Delta Township, and Bridgewater Interiors LLC.
Thank you. The motion has been made. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yays, zero nays, that resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Third one, Mr. Vice President.
I would move Public Act four twenty-five agreement renewal, Delta Township, Stur Lansing LLC.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yays, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and it takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So again, please go ahead and give, raising your hand, and we will close the sign-in after the first speaker. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers' boards of admission.
Sure. Mr. Vice President, please.
Sure. President Spatafor had moved that all items be considered as read and full, and that the proper referrals be made by you.
Thank you. It's a proper motion. Is there any discussion on that motion? Oh, no, less public comment. It's like Melina Brandon, like, no, that's not gonna work. So, sorry, I was looking at the wrong list. No further discussion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yays, zero nays, that, and Kerry, so we have a letter from the city clerk regarding municipal boards and authorities.
Let's go on file, please.
And a letter from the mayor regarding the annual action plan substantial agreement, second allocation of Cares Act funds.
This is CDBG. We're gonna put this committee whole.
Okay, and communications and petitions, notice from the Liquor Control Commission of a penalty hearing for Miko's Party Store.
Me and General Services.
Mr. President.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Madam.
That's fine. I would appreciate that the, that item also be sent to the police department. They are under a one-month suspension, and so LPD, whether, most of the time, those things do filter into them, but they should be aware of that.
It was mailed directly to the mayor, carbon copied on the.
Okay. But just to make sure, we've seen these things sometimes get lost, so if we can, you know, one more time sending it over would be great.
Okay.
Great. General Services, and then Sheri's paying attention, so she will make it so.
Okay. Oh, and a affidavit of disclosure submitted by Wesley Lewis of the Board of Water and Light.
That'll go to Ethics Board.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Yeah, I will entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Garza, and we're gonna take the Councilmember Dunbar leaving the meeting as also an excused absence as well, please. So Councilmember Spitzley.
I move to excuse both Councilmember Garza and Councilmember Dunbar from tonight's meetings.
Thank you. And before we do that, I'd just like to let you know, I got a text message from Councilmember Dunbar's family, and she is resting and taking in some water, so she sounds like she'll be all right, but, so. She's resting and haven't had a bit of water.
I don't think Chris knows what happened.
Oh, Councilmember Dunbar left the meeting feeling faint, so. All right, so let's call, let's call the roll on the motion.
I'm not sure what happened, but I've lost all sound.
Oh, that's.
I can't hear anyone.
Oh, good. Let's talk about him then. All righty. Oh, good, let's talk about him then. All righty.
Hold on.
I see that both he and Andy have put on the same shirt.
We can hear you, Chris, just so you know. So don't say anything.
I will assume that we are to public comment.
No, not yet. All right, can you hear us now?
We are to remarks by council members.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, no. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm gonna call the roll on excusing members. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor. Yes. Motion carries.
You better put that sign up again for something comes out.
Yeah, I don't know how to get over him. Sherry, can you call the clerk?
Yes, I can.
Keep him in that way.
Maybe he can rejoin and unjoin.
He could just guess where we are.
Right, let's play a game. All right, folks, we're gonna, we can move on without the clerk, I think. Certainly capable of handling it. So we're going to move on to remarks by council members. Are any council members that wish to make remarks? Councilmember Wood, thank you for offering to kill some time.
Thank you. This question is for the mayor. I know that when the first presentation came out by Councilmember Betts on the elimination of the two to five parking, it was indicated that you and he had worked on this ordinance. And my question to you is, knowing that you had worked with the Public Safety Committee during the, as we were looking at passing this some time ago, and came up with different compromises to make that so, I'd like to know your opinion on the ordinance that's before the council for consideration. And whether you work on it with him.
Sure. Well, when we came, oh, Mr. President, if I can, thank you. When we came in to office, we worked with council, I believe, Councilmember Wood and Garza and Hussein, I forgot who the third person was on. We worked with you to make sure that we had a system where we could enforce. The request was, we would like it to be enforced. And said, okay, if we're going to enforce, we have to use parking instead of police, and it needs to be funded for the positions. And that's where we came up with the system we have now, which, which I thought was a good compromise. It was a system where people who, you know, we, it's a 50-50 split right now in the city or so, when we polled it, I don't know, a year and a half ago, on who wants to allow for overnight parking and who doesn't. So we said, all right, this is a good compromise. And I was comfortable with that when it passed at the end of last year, when council passed that. Since that time, Councilmember Betts came in and we've heard public comments. And he indicated an interest in repealing the two to five. And we had a conversation and said, if we're going to repeal the two to five, then, you know, we need to maintain snow ability to clear snow and to, to make sure that we have abandoned cars that can be taken off the road. So we did work together on that, on that language. He was very receptive to what our public service raised in terms of if we were to get rid of the ordinance entirely, some of the pieces that that really needed to either be replaced or still needed to be there. So we did work together on his, his proposal that he was bringing forth to council. Councilmember Betts, I defer to you if I missed anything there. But I think those are the conversations we had, I don't know, earlier in the year.
All right, thank you, you answered my question.
Back.
Mr. Clerk, are you back with us?
I am back, and I can hear you.
Okay, well, let me just double check that there's no other council comments before we move on. I don't see any hands, and I don't see anyone frantically trying to attract my attention. So we are going to move on to remarks by the mayor. Mr. Mayor, anything to add this evening? Nope, offset, excellent. Mr. Clerk, please remind folks of the, we will shut it down after the first speaker.
Thank you, yes. We are to public comment on city government related matters. You'll have up to three minutes. And we, you do need to raise your hand to be called on. And after the first speaker speaks, we will not accept any more raised hands after that. So right now, I see four. The first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Melina Brand. And after Loretta is done speaking, there will be no more recognized if you haven't already raised your hand. So go ahead, Loretta.
Well, again, on the parking issue, I'm very aware that there are people who are in dire financial conditions, and a $125 a year parking permit would be very difficult for them, which is why I make the recommendation that the landlord have to cover that cost. And then again, the point is raised, well, then the landlord is going to just increase the rent. But I think, and I'm not absolutely certain how all of the Section 8 stuff works, but I think for those renters who are in the lowest of the income tiers, who do the Section 8 rentals, the landlord can weave that additional cost into whatever other costs he or she tabulates when they set the rent and then submit that rent reimbursement to whichever state or federal agency covers it. So it would not necessarily be a financial deficit to the lowest income tier renters if the landlords can build that into the charges that they send in for Section 8 reimbursement. So that's just a consideration. Thank you.
And thank you. So the sign up is now closed, and the next speaker is Melina Brand, followed by Rachel Diskin. Go ahead, Melina.
Hello, I'm sorry, I missed the comment earlier. But I'm here to speak in support of removing the parking ordinance. Until Loretta's point, not all low income people are, use Section 8. There's a lot of other people who need to live and do not, cannot get Section 8. Anyway, as many of you know, the ordinance disproportionately affects renters and people with low incomes. We know that a lot of Lansing was built before families had multiple cars, and there is a literal lack of space for parking in driveways, especially on the east side, and probably on the west side, too. All of the people who are opposed to remove, to removing this clearly don't care, they only care about their personal comfort, and they don't care about their neighbors, specifically their low income neighbors. And it's really sad to see people blatantly disregard a whole group of people like this. It kind of comes off like another issue that we're all dealing with. And I know a lot of you care about your constituents, and in this instance, it's your most at risk constituents who are negatively impacted by this ordinance. And I know this just went to committee, but please vote to repeal this parking ordinance. I honestly believe that if you vote to keep this, then you don't care about people with low incomes. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. And next is Rachel Diskin, followed by Kyle.
Hello, this is Rachel Diskin. I live on the east side. And I just wanted to speak again to remind us all that both the city of Lansing and Ingham County and the state of Michigan, so all three have declared racism, a public health crisis. And to me, that means we need to be looking at every single thing we do with an eye to equity and racial equity, social justice, et cetera. And, you know, there's so many pieces that touch that, that we've talked about tonight, including the parking ordinance, which I already mentioned, so I'm not going to talk about that again. I think Melina did a really good job of explaining that. But then I also think that this grant to hire the, that we got for $100,000 to hire somebody to work with small businesses is such a great opportunity. But who's going to be deciding who that $100,000 goes to? Who's the review panel? When that question was asked earlier, there wasn't really a clear answer. It was like me, and then maybe somebody from the foundation and somebody from LEAP. Okay, who are those people who are going to be reviewing the applications to make sure that the stated intent of making sure that our black community that was disproportionately affected by COVID-19, that they are helped, that we're raising the bar, that we're looking at this in an equity way? So, you know, I think it's just important that, you know, we're, it's important to me that you and the city are looking at everything in, with an equity lens. And like, just for an example, I just spent this whole time between the time that Brian McReign was speaking and now, trying to find the RFP for that position. I couldn't find it anywhere. I couldn't find it in the city of Lansing email that went out last week, like the neighborhood news, couldn't find it on Facebook, couldn't find it on the jobs page, couldn't find it on LEAP's job page. I Googled the exact name that's in the order, in the proposal, and I couldn't find it. If I can't find it, how are we going to make sure that a black person is able to apply for this position to help their community? We want to be raising people up. And so things as easy as just making sure that we're equitable with hiring and being purposeful about making sure everyone has their eyes on it will go such a long way. And so that's really all I have to say. But just, please, please be sure that everything we're looking at with an eye to equity, because it is a health crisis, and defund the police. I seek my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kyle, followed by Propagandie Michael Lynn. Kyle?
I'm here.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Hello again. I, quick note with regards to the parking. What Michael Lynn said about landlords passing the buck, I retract my original statements, I agree with him on that. The, and I want to make note of the people who were talking, you know, in favor of keeping the ordinance, there was this survivor bias, there was this, I did it, why can't you mentality. There was, and there was this sense of like, oh, I'm uncomfy. Okay, sorry that you're uncomfy. Like, if you don't want to live in a community with people, you know, if there's like, if in a community with people, there's, there's going to be noise sometimes, there's going to be cars in the streets sometimes, like, can we just chill a little bit? The, and then, so that's, that's all I have for the parking. My other comments, Mayor, Mayor Shore, I, I don't know you. I don't, I don't really know the history of everything that's going on. But what I do know is about a fundraising email that got sent out. And in it, you, there's a specific line that I guess I'm just confused by, because you say, they seek to tear down Lansing's progress to take advantage of the tough situation we're in. And, you know, there's obviously backlash around the use of they. And I think that, you know, it's, I think it's fair to say that, hey, this, this could totally be, you know, racism. I think it's at the very least otherism. It's saying, these people are not part of the Lansing community. I'm part of the Lansing community. And so it's, it's sort of like, not, you're not representing all of the people of Lansing when you say things like this. The, and I get that, you know, it sounds like you were trying to, oh, I was talking about the mayoral elections. Well, as far as I know, no one's running against you. And so there is no they there either. And then I guess, the other word that I struggle with is progress. They seek to tear down Lansing's progress. I feel like what tear down Lansing's progress was, you know, we, you know, we spent all of our time, money, and energy trying to revitalize downtown and do all this, all these downtown initiatives. And then of no fault of anybody, global pandemic happened, and downtown is a ghost town now. And so that money's down the drain. The, and so I guess that's a little frustrating that when something, it's a freak, freak thing like a coronavirus, you know, that damages our community is then going to be blamed on people who are actually standing up to fight for racial justice and equity and equality, rather than just talk about it. And so I would just ask that, you know, you really think about who you represent in this position and who you want to represent? And maybe don't sound as divisive as our current president does.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Propagandie, which I believe is Michael Lynn, followed by John.
It's really funny that Kyle had mentioned that Donald Trump and Andy Shore. I read an article earlier today where it said, the Trump administration has effectively turned the law into a dead letter, and following its basic principle that any law that lacks an effective and immediate enforcement mechanism essentially does not exist. And this is what we are basically seeing with Andy Shore. We're talking about dollars and cents in this parking ordinance, but our mayor is literally costing us what could turn out to be millions of dollars by his racism and his allowing of racism within his administration. You repeatedly make these type of situations, you know, she talked about racism being a global pandemic, and we understand that, and everybody said that, and the city council has. But you, you have actively been told, I know that you've been told and understand that Michael Tobin, the Assistant Fire Chief, has multiple HR complaints against himself, and now you have just made him interim chief. I feel like you are here to demolish the progress that Lansing has made. I really, literally feel, let's take you and everything you've done racially out of the equation. You're just terrible at your job. And this is why you've had to hire two, two deputy mayors. You know, those are hundred and some thousand dollar jobs, and we're talking about pennies that the low income house, a low income people need to save as far as this parking goes. And we're arguing those points when you're costing what could potentially be the city millions of dollars. I know you usually pander to, you know, the business and, you know, the unions and whatnot. But I'm here to tell you, man, I think that you really should heed warning that there's going to be a new voting pool that comes out, your next election and this election itself, that you're not going to be able to pander to. I think you're, I think that the people that are in your room that are telling you the things that you do are right, I mean, your, your Facebook post about the Black Panther was so disrespectful, man, to anybody in minority watching that, because we know everything that you've done. You're just terrible. Like, whoever you have writing your Facebook post now, you need to talk to, man, because it's really hurtful. It's, 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 it's dysfunctional from the position where you're at. I just wish that you would just leave, man. I really do, so that my city could move forward. The word that you used, they, we know who you were talking about, you're talking about us. That day that you're talking about is going to be huge when it comes back time around. I would like to speak to your donors and anybody donating money to Andy Shore. I will know who you are. I've already seen who's donated since May, when all of you have known that he's been upholding racism. I will call you out and go to the end of the earth to let everybody know you're upholding racism. Thank you, I seed my time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is John, followed by Amber Cooley. Go ahead, John.
I just wanted to take a quick moment to say, let's support the Lansing Police Department. Let's not defund the police. I think the chief and his crew are doing a fine job. If ever citizens' constitutional rights are not upheld equitably, then that is, that is something that, that the chief and powers that be will definitely need to take care of. And I have faith that he and his department and local prosecutors will be able to do so. You know, I hear a lot of, a lot of anger from people. As a related point, I hear a lot of anger from people, but I don't hear a lot of, a lot of positive thinking and trying to solve problems. And it's a shame, I think that, you know, we got, we got so much anger out there and not enough love. We all want to live in a good community. I think we, we all have something to contribute. So I would urge the council to reject and ignore such vitriolic language. So fund the police, please reject Councilman Betts and Councilwoman Dunbar's resolution to defund the police. It's, doesn't have anything worth passing. It doesn't have anything worth passing in it. I think it needs to be completely relooked. I think it comes from a good place. I think they might have good hearts. And I think they want the same as everybody else in this community. But as it's written right now, it's, it's not even worth the council's time voting. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Amber Cooley. Go ahead, Amber.
Hello, thank you. I'd like to talk to the parking ordinance. To the point of streets being crowded and looking trashy, I am really failing to understand how a two-to-five AM ordinance is going to make any difference in how the streets look during waking hours. So I think this is a completely invalid argument. Secondly, if the parking passes and ticketing is kept, the price of a parking pass needs to be lowered. It is absolutely ridiculous to expect families that live paycheck to paycheck to spend $125 in one month sum. That's a grocery bill, an electric bill payment, and I think all this does is further increase keeping the poor, poor. Everyone gets Amber alerts, so we all know it's possible to send out an emergency notification for moving cars during snow removal and street sweepers. The same people that wouldn't move their car for an emergency notification are the same people who won't move their cars no matter what ordinance is placed. Again, an invalid argument. I understand a lot of effort went to putting the ordinance in place to begin with, but clearly more consideration needs to be put into who we are catering to and who we are hurting with this ordinance. Someone mentioned, and I would like to reiterate, that these are family homes and families in today's busy world need multiple cars. And this kind of space wasn't planned for when these neighborhoods were built. If it's not about money and it's not about invalid arguments that I've just stated, this is an obsolete ordinance and needs to be reconsidered with great scrutiny. With that, I yield my time.
Okay, thank you. That was our last speaker.
All right. Well, thank you, council. You know, I want to thank you for your attention this evening. We have no further business. Wish you a happy and restful Labor Day weekend. Let's not forget why we take today off. And then I will see you all back here on September 14th. So we are officially adjourned.